Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for Monday, July 15, 2019. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I'm your Deputy City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, David Tatro. The following is two pieces of legislation to be heard by Pittsburgh City Council. Bill Number 1800, Resolution Authorizing the City Solicitor on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Petition the Orphans Court Division of the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County to Request the Transfer of a Portion of a Certain Lot, now Part of the Enright Parklet in the East Liberty Neighborhood of the City to Penley Park South, Inc., in Exchange for an Abutting Parcel of Land of Approximately Equal Size and Value as the Subject Property to be Transferred from Penley Park South to the City of Pittsburgh for Consolidation with and use as part of the Enright Parklet, plus all necessary or appropriate expenses incurred by the City and/or upon such other terms and conditions as the Court or the City authorize and/or direct. Bill Number 1834, Petition from the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh requesting a Public Hearing before City Council relative to Proposed Legislation 2019-1800 authorizing the City Solicitor to Petition the Orphans Court Division to Request the Transfer of a Portion of Enright Parklet to Penley Park South, Inc., in Exchange for an Abutting Parcel of Land. This petition was found to be valid and in accordance with the Home Rule Charter. That concludes the reading of the legislation up for discussion by City Council. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this Cablecast Public Hearing of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Monday, July 15, 2019. I'm Councilman Kraus. I'll be chairing this evening's public hearing, and we are joined here by Councilmember Ricky Burgess, and we may have other members joining us shortly. But for the time being, we'll begin by reading the purpose of the bills as to why we're assembled for this public hearing. And so, Madam Clerk, would you please read the purpose of Bills 1800 and 1834?
Bill 1800, Resolution Authorizing the City Solicitor on behalf of the City to Petition the Orphans Court Division of the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County to Request the Transfer of a Portion of a Certain Lot, now Part of Enright Parklet in the East Liberty Neighborhood of the City to Penley Park South, Inc., in Exchange for an Abutting Parcel of Land of Approximately Equal Size and Value as the Subject Property to be Transferred from PPS to the City of Pittsburgh for Consolidation with and use as part of Enright Parklet, plus all necessary or appropriate expenses incurred by the City and/or upon such other terms and conditions as the Court or the City authorize and/or direct. Bill Number 1834 is a Petition from the Residents of the City requesting a Public Hearing before City Council relative to Proposed Legislation 2019-1800 authorizing the City Solicitor to Petition the Orphans Court Division to Request a Transfer of a Portion of Enright Parklet to Penley Park South, Inc., in Exchange for an Abutting Parcel of Land.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. We are going to go directly into comment from the public. I would like to ask that when you come to the podium as a registered speaker, we ask that you please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts, and when the red light comes on, your time will have expired. So, we will go with our first registered speaker, which is Mr. Arthur Allen. Mr. Allen, welcome.
Yes, please. We'll hold your time there. I should've brought that up after I was done. Thanks, Mr. Allen.
Okay. I'd like to begin with a statement. Communities are built one home at a time. With that in mind, LG Realty wants to build retail office space and a parking garage where Penn Plaza Apartments once stood. I'd like to talk a little bit about the state of places to live and ground floor retail in the East Liberty and the greater East Liberty area. There's the Baum House, which opened in 2015 at South Graham and Baum Boulevard. They still have no ground floor retail tenants. They're still looking for people to live in that building. Getting closer, both Coda on Center and the Walnut on Highland Buildings still have apartments available for rent. Getting closer to the area we're discussing, the building which houses Duolingo has an entire first floor looking for a retail tenant. Getting adjacent to the Penn Plaza, the former Penn Plaza site, you have East Liberty Place North and East Liberty Place South. Both of these buildings also have available units for tenants, one and two bedrooms. They're both looking for retail on the ground floor. Behind East Liberty Place South, the city has a parking lot, which I drove by at 2:00 this afternoon and noticed half of it was full. So, what I would like to point out is, we're looking at a lot of open spots for ground floor retail. I know that the Gumbergs are not planning on having living spaces any longer in their development, but there's plenty of places that offer market rate housing, and there's plenty of parking. There's multiple lots, the one adjacent to the AAAA Building where that lot's empty most of the day anyways. The thing that I guess I will wrap up with is partly occupied buildings, empty parking lots, they do not create a vibrant neighborhood. People are what create a community. The idea of taking Enright Park, which has been described incorrectly as a facility that has not been maintained properly, which is completely false. The city has been, in the last two weeks, painting all the park benches, they're cutting the grass regularly. It's a completely fine, usable park that's utilized on a daily basis. To take that and hand it over on a promise that it will be redesigned and redeveloped, to me, is very worrisome. Kevin Ackland made those promises. He's gone.
Mr. Allen, thank you.
I'm sorry, I live in East Liberty. Sixteen years.
Our next registered speaker is Yvonne Francine Brown. I do not see her here. Our next speaker is Mel Packer. I do not see Mel here. Our next speaker then will be John Axtell, and John, I believe you are here. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Let me briefly give... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. John Axtell, 233 South Pacific Avenue in Friendship.
Thank you.
South Pacific. Yeah. Let me give counsel a little bit of context about the legislation that you are considering. I'm sure everyone is aware of the fact that this regards the redevelopment of the Penn Plaza site and land transfers that will reconfigure Enright Park. In order to get to the point where we are, there was mediation between the developer, the Gumbergs, the City of Pittsburgh, and several neighborhood groups and individuals. The consent order that was crafted involved much compromise and much careful planning. The major point that the neighbors and neighborhood groups that intervened in this matter previously are concerned about here is the ownership of New Eva Street. There will be a new street created running from Negley to Euclid. It will form the south border of the commercial development and the north border of the park. That is proposed under the legislation before you to be privately owned. That's something that was not a subject of mediation. It was something that the community interveners frankly thought a new street connecting two major streets was going to be a public street. We have serious concerns regarding whether a private street serving a public park is going to provide adequate unfettered access for all park users now and in the future. As you know, the test that the city has to pass is one of public trust. When a park is reconfigured, the new park must be as good or better than the existing park. We think that major access to a reconfigured public park on a private street is a recipe for problems, is a recipe for private guards arbitrarily stopping and restricting access to this public facility. We urge you to reconsider this. Another item is that the bill refers to a clarification of the consent agreement reached on May 29 of this year. The first we ever heard of it was in the legislation. We think that this is a fundamental problem with this legislation, that this was not properly and legally added to the consent agreement without our knowledge or consent. The entire legislation package fails, we believe. Please take these concerns seriously.
All right, Mr. Axtell, thank you for being here. Carmen Brown, I think I saw you come in. You're here. Hi, Carmen, welcome.
My name is Carmen Brown. I live in the East Liberty area. I just wanted to, I'm gonna read something that I wrote up, and I'm just outraged that this legislation proposed that the Solicitor will be used to advocate on behalf of the Gumbergs to take away and privatize private land. Councilman Burgess, who sponsored this legislation, has no shame in proposing to use city resources, such as the city Solicitor, to help fight alongside the Gumbergs to obtain land that belongs to the public. The Gumbergs who own Penley South property has displaced 100 residents from their housing, but that's not enough. Now, these greedy developers want to restrict Ninth Council District residents from enjoyment of park and walking on public streets. It's a disgrace that Councilman Burgess continues his corruption and selling out the Ninth Council District by privatizing our parks and our streets. I'm asking, I'm asking other council, council members to vote against the city Solicitor intervening and filing this petition to Orphans Court on behalf of Penley South. Thank you.
Carmen, thank you. Okay, Sally Ann, I saw you come in. You're next. Welcome. Thanks for being here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sally Ann Clues, and I live at 227 South St. Clair in East Liberty, less than a block from the park. I've been about a 16-year resident of the neighborhood. I'm also one of the co-founders of the Enright Park Neighborhood Association. I'm sorry. And I've been one of the active intervenors regarding the redevelopment. Today, I am here to encourage City Council and the Mayor's Office to resolve key issues pertaining to the proposed park reconfiguration prior to bringing this petition to Orphans Court. I agree that the proposed reconfiguration will provide a substantial buffer between the new development and the adjacent neighborhood, and that the new connections to the park will both be of great benefit to the community overall. However, my two key points are, first, it is critical to the neighborhood and to the city's interest that the new Eva Street be publicly owned and not be a privately owned street with a public easement. A publicly owned street will provide permanent public access to the park, the adjacent neighborhood, and will serve to break down the super block that was imposed on the community via the '60s redevelopment that resulted from the consolidation of the small-scale lots and public streets, and also resulted in Penn Plaza. While the developer has stated that private ownership is required for their stormwater infrastructure, there are several examples of streets that were constructed by private entities with integrated stormwater containment systems below, then becoming publicly owned with easements from maintenance. Among these are Bakery Square just across the neighborhood. The second key point, which is noted in the consent order, is that the community interveners, of which I am one, agreed to the reconfigured park if and only if an East End Affordable Housing Fund were established to help bridge the gap for financing mixed-income housing, what would provide well over 200 units of affordable subsidized and moderate income units in East Liberty, Garfield, and Larimer, and that these units be completed concurrent with LG Realty's new development. To date, the housing fund has not been established, and we have received no updates from the city regarding the timeline or progress to those goals. The consent order clearly states under Item 4, "The city shall consider legislation authorizing the land swaps," which we are considering, "the vacation of the speed lane, the RAP-LDP, and an amendment to the East Liberty TRID map," I'm not going to read all the details, "at the same time." To the best of my knowledge, the required actions for the housing fund and the expanded TRID have not been undertaken, and yet, we are now being asked to support this land swap. The consent order that I was party to included numerous provisions that are interconnected, and if we don't have guarantee of delivery of these provisions, I cannot support the proposed land swap either here at council or should it come to Orphans Court without these issues resolved. I strongly encourage the City Council and the Mayor's Office to work cooperatively with both the developers and the interveners to resolve these issues and to ensure the establishment of the new Eva Street as a publicly owned street prior to bringing this petition forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally Ann. Thank you very much. Conrad, you're here. Conrad Graham. No, Conrad Graham? Okay, I saw him here. Reverend Love? I don't believe he is here either. Celeste Scott, I know, is not here. Jennifer Haven is here. Hi, Jennifer, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. Jennifer Haven, I live at 205 South Pacific Avenue, Pittsburgh 15224. I want to make sure I am an employee of the City of Pittsburgh, but I'm here on my own behalf this evening. This evening, I ask council to hold this legislation pending clarification and further action from the city Solicitor's office. More specifically, petitioners, although they were promised by the Clerk's office that we would have at least 10 days' notice of this hearing, only received notice of the public hearing on Friday, three days prior to this hearing, in the mail. That did not give us very much time to review the legislation. With regards to the legislation, it refers to Exhibits A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. These exhibits are not posted on the city's website. They're not attached to the legislation. They haven't been given to council members. I asked my council member. She does not have access to those exhibits. I don't understand how the public can review legislation, especially prior to a public hearing, and how city council members can be asked to vote on something when you haven't seen the full legislation with Exhibits. Paragraph four of the consent order that people were referring earlier, and I was a party to that consent order, between the City of Pittsburgh, Penley Park South, four different community groups, and several private individuals, it requires the city to consider legislation authorizing the land swap at the same time as the city vacates Penn Circle Speed Lane and they expand the TRID map to 3/4 of a mile from the site so that we have access to affordable housing throughout Garfield, Friendship, and East Liberty, as well as Larimer. This has not been accomplished. To the contrary, at a meeting with the URA and the Planning Director Gastel on May 30, the interveners were advised that the expansion was not possible. The legislation refers to a clarification of the consent order on May 29, 2019. This materially alters the size of the dedicated parkland. Neither the parties to the consent order or their council were given notice of this change. Finally, I don't believe this land swap meets the requirements of the Donated and Dedicated Land Act of 1959 or the Supreme Court case petition of the Borough of Downington decided June 20, 2017. The city must show that the parkland is no longer practicable or possible, and the parkland has ceased to serve the public interest. I don't think that either of those have been proven. And I urge you, please, to read both the DTPA of 1959 and the Supreme Court case before you make a decision on this legislation. Thank you so much.
Jennifer, thank you. Appreciate it. Angelique Bamberg, I believe you are here. Yes, hi, Angelique, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Angelique Bamberg, and I live with my family at 233 Amber Street, a half a block away from Enright Park, and I've lived there since 2001, so longtime resident of the neighborhood. I want to say that I am in favor of an excellent development on the Penley Plaza site, and I'm in favor of an excellent park as a daily user of that park with my family. And I'd like to briefly just make three points, some of which we'll reiterate what has gone before. First is that in order for both of these goals to be accomplished, an excellent development and an excellent park, as well as an excellent neighborhood, which I believe we have, it is imperative that Eva Street remain a public street. Our neighborhood is a funny little neighborhood. It's kind of hemmed in. We have limited access to the main thoroughfares of Negley Avenue and Friendship Avenue. Eva Street is our other access. With that being a privately controlled street, that would limit our ability to get in and out of our neighborhood at certain times and in ways that we can't right now predict, and that's not something that, as a neighborhood, we can support as part of the land transfer that is related to the park. Also, with the park itself remaining publicly owned property, a publicly owned asset, we believe it is imperative that the park remain accessible via a public right-of-way. So, I also would only support this legislation going forward if it stipulates that Eva Street remain a publicly owned street. Second, I'd like to join Mr. Allen, who spoke before, in rebutting the city's finding that Enright Park is a poorly maintained park and a poorly used park, and that it contributes problems such as light pollution to our neighborhood. Again, having lived near Enright Park for 18 years, I have not found that to be the case. This park is regularly maintained by the city. Certainly, we would be in favor of the play equipment being on a schedule for replacement, but that's a common issue to parks throughout the city. The park is maintained. The park is heavily used. The basketball courts are an asset to our community, and the lights there don't contribute light pollution, and have not been problematic in any way through all the time that I've lived there. Finally, I would also like to reiterate a concern about the modification to the consent decree without the knowledge of all of the parties involved. In order for an excellent development to happen, there needs to be trust between the developers and the neighborhood where the development is taking place. And if the consent decree can be modified without the knowledge and the consent of all of the parties involved, then we lose that trust and we lose our confidence in the consent decree as a meaningful document and a meaningful order that we can all rely on going forward. Even if the modification only consisted of a clarification, all parties need to be literally party to that kind of clarification and modification and need to ratify that so that we all have the same facts and understanding of this process going forward. Thank you.
Okay. Angelique, thank you. Finally, our last registered speaker is Scott Kowalski. Scott's not here. Sir, I just saw you come in, and forgive me, I can't, I should know your name, and I can't remember it. You don't realize I'm talking to you.
Randall.
Is that who that is? He wasn't registered then. Okay. All right. Thank you, Randall. I apologize. So, we have exhausted our list of registered speakers, and so, as is our tradition, if there are people here that would like to register comment before the council, you may approach the podium. We will give you one minute to put your comment on the public record if you wish to do so. Again, I ask you if you'd please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Jess Ansel, and I currently live at 5240 Stanton Avenue in Stanton Heights. I used to live on Center Avenue, just like a few blocks from this park. And, you know, besides, this is worrisome for many reasons. It's worrisome that there doesn't seem to be following the law and how this whole deal was made, and now that we're taking something that was public and making it private, but also, I'm just hearing things that aren't true. Like, I've been in the park three times in the past month. I just had a barbecue there with a lot of people. It's one of the nicer parks in the area that I know that's within walking distance. One of my friends plays basketball there all the time. I heard one of the two basketball courts is going to be affected by this. And like, there's also, I've seen kids on the playground. It's not the busiest playground, but like, people use it, you know? And it's already kind of hard to get to, being only on these two side streets where you kind of have to find like a way into the park that's not immediately obvious. If you make that street private, it's just going to be worse. And the people in the neighborhood will remember what happened to this. You know, we know Ricky Burgess is the one who pushed for this proposal as it's going down, so I just ask you, considering...
Thank you very much. Is there any, please come down.
Hi, Richard Schwartz. I reside at 5407 Coral Street, 15206. Just to, not to reiterate what's been said before, but to really ask for some leadership, perhaps, from council and from the Mayor's Office in bringing the different parties together, community interests, the developers, city officials, to really work through some of the complexity that's attached to this legislation and to what has to happen to make this project successful. We've had a history of sitting down with the developers and going through some very difficult processes to get things done. I think the community is more than happy to do that, but we're going to need to do it quickly. In fairness to them, they have a timetable that they're working on. We want to, we want to bring maybe a city Solicitor, city council, the Mayor's Office, possibly the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure together with community interests and see if we can get this legislation to better reflect the priorities of our community.
Thanks, Richard. Appreciate it. Anyone else then wishing to register a comment at the public hearing? Okay, come on down. Welcome. If you'll start with your name and where you reside, please.
Hi there. My name is Quinn Kobalak. I live at 500 Tripoli Street in the north side. So, Councilmember Harris, I voted for you in this past election. I live in your district. For the reason alone that this would privatize publicly held land, that's reason enough to vote against this. And as I understand it, since this is a public park, you need to demonstrate that it's in the public interest before giving it to private developers, and I feel like that hasn't been satisfied. So, I would urge you to vote against this, and I would like to wholeheartedly endorse a lot of the comments that were said before. Thanks so much.
Yeah, Quinn, thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. Ma'am, did you wish to speak? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lauren Russell. I live half a block from the park, 246 South St. Clair Street, number three. I didn't register a comment because I didn't know anything about it till yesterday when someone, the Neighborhood Association, I guess, put a flyer in my mailbox, so I sort of came to figure out what's going on. I'm concerned about, obviously, privatizing public land, and I also use the park. I see other people using the park. I was also surprised by the comment on light pollution because I live half a block from it and hadn't observed that. But I'm also concerned that if I only found out about it yesterday, then a lot of people in the neighborhood probably don't know about it and haven't had a chance to review what's going on or weigh in at all. So, it seems like this should be postponed, and the neighborhood should be consulted.
Okay, Lauren, thank you. Is there anyone else then wishing? Randall, come on down.
Randall, right? Did I say that right? Okay.
Evening, councilmembers. My former colleague, Darlene Harris, of course. Thank you for your service.
Name and where you reside.
My name is Randall Taylor. I'm from East Liberty. Again, I stand here again, very disappointed, but not shocked, that this city councilman and this city continues to operate in the same manner. There's no concern for the people, of course, they're going to be notified. They get okay for a meeting, and it's held on a Monday because they're not intended to be here. I'm just stunned how the shenanigans and backroom deals continue to go on. I'm stunned how LG Realty can kick out 500 of Councilman Burgess's constituents, and he still supports them. How they can take the city into court every chance they can get, yet we still stand here this evening, giving them free... I'm stunned how LG Realty can kick out 500 of Councilman Burgess's constituents and he still supports them, how they can take the city into court every chance they can get, yet we still stand here this evening, giving them free land, free legal aid, because I understand your solicitor, our city solicitor is going to do free legal work on their behalf, again, giving them our free streets. Again, these bad actors are coming into the city instead of being ostracized by the city, instead of being cut off by Councilman Burgess for their support. He continues to support them. This is another sad day, but a new day is coming, and I'm asking on council, hold this up, hold this up, Councilman President Kraus.
Mr. Taylor, we're not gonna get a...
Until January, until January of 2020.
Thank you. We're not doing campaign speeches in the chamber, thank you.
Hold it until January 20.
Sir, we'll be removed if you can, if you understand. Please sit.
We've had a great hearing so far. Couple of things I would like to address though, sir, you'd like to register comment? Couple of things I would like to address, just, I hate to see misinformation become sort of the norm. The discussion around the swap of this property has probably been, been discussed the better part of five years now, if maybe not even a little bit longer, so this, I'm gonna have him removed. That's, we're not doing it. We're not doing it, okay? And so, this idea that there is backroom deals and mishandling and secretive behavior taking place, I don't like the integrity of this council's being impugned with speculation because that's simply not true. This has been...
Did you see that, sir? Let's go. We don't see nothing, let's go. We're excited. We're not saying that, sir. I'm thinking of January, I'm thinking of March.
Okay.
Let's go, let's go, let's go.
We had a good hearing going here, but this has been an active conversation for probably the better part of about five years now. Sir, if you wish to register comment, we had an open microphone for you to come and register your comment, and you chose not to do so. Anyway, having said that, this has been an active conversation, and if there are people that have been ill-informed or misinformed, I apologize, but we did our due diligence, we did our due diligence in scheduling this public hearing at the request of 25 registered voters who said they intended to attend this public hearing. That's why we held it on a Monday evening, it's not to hide anything, it's to give people the opportunity that work during the day to actually be able to come out and participate in the public process. So 25 registered people who committed to being here for this public hearing and signed that petition were required to be here. So, we put it out there. We need you to be active and engaged, and for those of you that are, we greatly appreciate that you are here tonight. So with that, I'll open it up to members if you wish to register comment. Councilwoman Harris.
Yes, I had one person out there from my district, and as you know, I have 45 years, I think I'm involved a little bit more than Rick, but I've known Rick for quite a long time. And hearing what you have to say doesn't sound like there's any peace right now, and it needs to be worked out more, so I have to support the community when there is no resolution. So I am hoping that before we vote on it and it's held, that there are more discussions between the community and the developer. I think you can come to a resolution with this, I've seen them done every day, and I've done quite a few, but I don't see with all the different things that the community is talking about, and I'm sure Rick's been involved, that he needs more meetings before this is voted on. So, thank you very much, everyone, for being here tonight, and we'll see what happens. If it's voted on this week, my vote's no. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, so then with nothing further?
Okay. So I just want to thank everyone for coming out. We've held this in the evening on purpose so that everyone could have their chance to chime in. I will say simply two things. One is, this development is wholly and solely in my council district. Although it borders other, it borders another councilperson's district, it is not in their district. It is completely utterly in my council district. I represent this area. And so, I am grateful for those of you who have reached out to me and allowed me to preside in this conversation. I wish more of you had done that, that would have been, I think, the appropriate thing to do. The way council works, the way the council is supposed to work in our tradition, is that normally the councilperson who presides over the district where the process and the project occurs leads that conversation. Anyone can have their opinion, certainly all councilpeople have their opinion, but I tend to get a little disappointed if other councilpeople decide to lead in a project that's wholly, completely, and utterly in my council district. It's something I do not do to others, and I would expect them not to do it to me, because I think it's inappropriate to our tradition. Again, it's just our tradition, and it's not being collegial. And so, the second thing is, I believe that everyone's good, has good intentions. I don't believe, other than people who have some political agendas who have left, the people who've talked mostly all have great agendas. But I am suggesting that this is not the place to have that conversation. I'm suggesting that this needs, this has had a variety of legal statutes and lawsuits and mediations, and council now is not the place for this conversation to continue. It's actually back in court. And so I'm going to recommend that the land, that this conversation goes back to Orphan Court. Those of you who are interested can continue this conversation in the proper place, in Orphan Court. This is not council's job to mediate this continued process. I believe it's now in the court system, and the court now best be the final arbiter. So that is my intention. My intention is to move this land swap. The thing that's ironic in this, and some of you, few of you know this, is this land swap really has very little to do with the development. This development's gonna happen with or without this land swap. This is really for the park. This land swap is essential to make the park viable for the community, and that's why I support it, because that's really what this is about. It's really not about the development at all, they don't need this for the development at all. It's really the park and the reconfiguration of the park, that's really what we're talking about now. And so I'm going to recommend it being passed on Wednesday and being passed on Tuesday, and I suggest that those of you who have issues with it should go to Orphans Court and continue that conversation. That's my own, that's my public opinion, that's my personal opinion. And I do say another thank you. I want to thank you, President Kraus, for his willingness to be very, very flexible and the clerk's office, and accommodating so that we could have this evening meeting where everyone could be included and no one was left out of this conversation. Again, thank you for your leadership.
Okay, thank you. So with that, our business here is completed, and I will ask for a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Okay, and we're adjourned.